Good evening. Welcome to our Pittsburgh Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting. And the meeting is now called to order. And we'd like to ask you to join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda? Kim and Emily, thank you. All in favor? The motion carries. Thank you. Next, we will welcome our Principal Josh Walker from Cockins Road Middle School for a building report. And Mike Fellsoy, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. That's a sensitive thing. Thank you for those of you that were able to make the tour last week. Hopefully, you saw the beginning of what we're going to continue with today. We're talking about a safe and supportive environment for our students. Mike Fellsoy is with me, as well as our Councilman Amy Daniels, and a new staff member that we'll introduce a little bit later. But like I said, we started off with going to our ELL classroom, so you could see how that had changed from a computer lab into really our ELL center. We spent some time in the library, seeing how Tony Baller in our library has really made such a conscious change in space for students, that it's become really one of the most desirable places in our building for people to go, from reading on the couches, weird shaped couches, to the chess, to the Maker Center, and really making it, you know, when I grew up, the library wasn't the place to go. Now it is the happenin' place at Cockins Road. So, we want to take you through the, some other examples of a safe and supportive environment, but really wanted to anchor back to three major documents. The PCST core values, our mission statement at Cockins Road and the Midnight Way, three things that we anchor everything in, that have overlapping statements at their core about that safe and supportive environment, as you can see up there. We say the Midnight Way as part of our maxim, just because that in itself is about the safe and supportive learning environment. And even before COVID, this was really a focus at our middle school in how we were doing things, how we reshaped the counseling center, which Amy can talk about a little bit as well. And then seeing what came out, what our student needs were, really pushed us forward in that, because if the students don't feel safe, they don't feel supported, they don't feel valued, learning isn't going to happen. So focusing on that environment is key. So I'm going to ask Amy to come up and talk a little bit first about our Connected Adult Activity. And she does have our new staff member, who we'll get to later.
All right. Thank you. So, this is an activity that's being done across the entire district, a little differently level to level. In our building, there were two components to it. First, we had students identify adults in the building that they felt connected to. And we did that through our enrichment classes. We had a separate lesson for sixth graders, and then our seventh and eighth graders, where they just engaged in some conversation about what it means to be connected to an adult, what that might look like. And then we gave the students an opportunity to identify up to two adults in our school that they felt connected to. And we had them fill out a form, so that we could have the information, as well as they filled out a little postcard to the teacher, saying, "Thank you for being my trusted adult." And we put those in teacher mailboxes. What we did after we finished gathering all the data, is we looked for a few different things. We looked, first, we shared, obviously, the teachers had the postcards, but we went into our teams and talked about the kids, and specifically talked about who, students who really were not feeling connected to adults in our building. And we had conversations with the teachers about different reasons why that might be. So we didn't automatically, you know, get concerned right away. Some of the kids, we were able to say, "They just moved here from out of state," or, "We know that they have a really close connection to a religious institution outside of the school," or, "We know that they have a really tight-knit family with siblings, and we know that they have a lot of connections." And then we really focused in on students who we kind of paused and said, "Okay, none of us really feel like we know a lot about this student, and they obviously are not feeling connected to us." And with that, we could do a bunch of different things. What a lot of times, what it looked like, is within the team structure, we were able to have one of the team members, or an encore teacher, say, "Hey, I'm going to kind of take that kid under my wing." So, you know, so I'm going to make that extra effort. This didn't mean calling them in to have an in-depth conversation. It meant making an extra effort to ask them about their weekend, or their sport, or their pets, that sort of thing. We also then asked staff to really think about connections that they had. And we framed it for teachers by giving them some questions to think about, such as, "I would know if this student was having a bad day. I would be able to tell you something about this student's activities and interests outside of school. I've had some one-on-one conversations with this student." And we had a faculty meeting, where we kind of posted up by teams, all the students in our buildings, and we asked teachers to put dots by students, that they felt they could answer four out of the five questions for. We then took that information back to our teachers again, and I looked at, with my teams, kind of kids who had two or less dots. And then again, had those conversations about, "Well, this student just moved here," you know, tried to think of reasons why a student might not be feeling connected. But again, that was really good information for teachers to see, "Hey, people are not knowing who the student is. We have to start to know this kid." So that's what we started to do. Right now, I'm kind of collaborating with Barker Road, to talk about how to bring our special area encore teachers more in the loop, and make sure that they're part of those conversations. Thank you.
Thanks again for inviting me and Josh here. It's actually a great time every year for me, because it gives me a chance to reflect for a moment on how really blessed I am to work here, and how lucky I am to work here with the people. Like Amy. Like Josh. Like our new, uh...
Mila.
But just, it's an awesome place. It's a fun place. It's the kind of place where you go into work, and you laugh, and you see things that are great happening around you. And I'm hoping I can capture a little bit of that tonight, because my daughter just went through middle school. And it's like, the thing you want is to know your kid's going to a school that's going to embrace them, going to make them feel comfortable as an individual, and make them feel safe, and just enjoy school, enjoy growing. And I think, I think we're doing that. And I thanks, thank you for that opportunity to do that here. We continue our circle work. I've talked many years now about the circle work we're doing, and how that's occurring. The next evolution of that, I would say, is this. In a lot of cases, where we're having conflicts with students that are maybe repeat conflicts that have gone on for a long period of time, we're now involving parents in that process quite a bit. And that's been highly successful. It's great to see the parents together, working with the kids, so they see them, you know, on the same page with the school. And that's been very impactful for solving a lot of issues with our, with our kids. The parents seem to be very appreciative of it. And that's kind of like the new twist we've taken on it. We've done it a little bit in the past, but we're becoming a lot more comfortable with it, and doing it a lot more this year. Of course, we continue doing the community circles. So many of the teachers are now just doing that on their own, and it's great when they just kind of report back how they're doing it, or we capture it in like a little mini observation, as we're going around the buildings. It's like, wow, they, they took one of the principals some circles, and here they are just implementing it. It's just part of the daily routine. So I think that's been great. And of course, our academic circles continue with some of our teachers, where they're using the concept of circles to teach historical documents, to look at novels, that kind of thing. And this is what I was talking about, being just an awesome place, a middle school. You think of Cockins Road now, it's almost, almost 20 years old, and the school's starting to take on just what is Cockins Road, the identity of Cockins Road, and some of those traditions that, that we have. Most recently, our Spirit Week, which is really like middle school homecoming. There's different contests throughout the week, and it culminates in a big pep rally. And one of the things we did this year, again, you talk about involving everybody, this is such a great idea. We had a rock-paper-scissors contest. Every kid had beads that were their team colors. The adults all had like these beads, and I'm talking about the Mardi Gras type, right? And you'd play rock-paper-scissors with anyone you saw in the hall, and whoever won got to keep the beads. Before you know it, there'd be two people left with these giant things of beads around their neck, and they played the final competition. You can see it right there on the right, in front of the whole school. It was just a great way to say, like, everybody got to participate. And it's hard to come up with something where, you know, over 600 people can participate. But the, the Student Council really did a bang-up job with that. It was awesome. Just some other things we do. Theme Days, whether it's Buffalo Bills Days, or if it's Dress Like the Nineties Day, or the Eighties. It generates conversations between the kids, the teachers. People see me dress up, kids see me, and it gives them an opportunity for me to connect, in a way that's, that's super positive and fun. And I think that's like, a lot of the key in building these relationships with kids, is sharing a little bit about yourself, letting them in a little bit, to what it's like for you, for your family. And that gives us those appropriate opportunities to do that. So, there's a lot of good that comes out of this, a lot of these celebrations, Jar Wars, for example, part of Spirit Week, over $1,000 were raised for Wilmaugh Cancer, and being able to see the kids present a check to the representative and be a part of that. Again, just awesome, awesome times, and good things happening at Cockins Road. Thank you.
The loudest cheer at the pep rally is when the, the winning staff member went down in the first round. Our math teacher, Mr. D'Amico, was defeated by an eighth grader. So it was, it was a blast. And just to piggyback a little bit about what Mike said, it was the student voice that did that. They came up with that. They come up with the theme days. They've changed the pep rally to make it so there's a hula hoop contest, which by the way, they don't stop. We have to like throw things at them to get them to stop it. A drawing contest, plunger scooters, which FYI, don't work. So we just kind of let them cheat. It was, it was just a lot of fun. And that, that top word, their tradition, it's who we are, the kids look forward to it, because they see themselves represented. And I am very excited about our new staff members. So that's a different picture than was in your packet. But as Honey and Mila, come on up, Mila. Mila knows I still have a treat in my pocket, too. So she's staying a little close, aren't you? So, I believe Amy and I started talking about Mila before she was born.
Yes.
So Amy said, "We're going to get a dog, and I want her to be trained." One of our new staff members this year, Lauren Whiteside, in our A-1-1 program, came to us with an already certified dog, Honey, who's absolutely the calmest golden retriever I've ever met. So they balance each other well. And to the impact has been fantastic. I think this next picture really captures the impact of having the dogs. Because you, we stand in the front in the morning, and you watch the students walk in, and they light up. "It's a Honey day, it's a Mila day." Or, "They're both here." Wow. And you see the students instantly smile, instantly laugh, and come over, and goodness help them, if they get down to her height, because then, then it's all about love. But you see students that, they check in a little bit more during the day. They want to come down and spend some time with the dogs. We know one of our students who suffered a loss in the family in the last year, has made it a point to come down, made a special attachment with Mila. A program, in our A-1-1 program, we've, we've had some support in there. She had, by the way, a very long day today. She was in school today. She went to the faculty meeting, and that's excitement right there. She slept through most of it, but now that she's back here at night. So they work. They're with our kiddos, they're with our staff members. Kids take on the responsibility of going for the walk, and doing that kind of necessary stuff. And really, a lot of staff support. You know, they go to team meetings, they go to department meetings, and you see staff members that come in, myself included, that sometimes you just need a little time. And to see the impact, I've always thought about it, and I've always heard about it, but this year, to have Honey and then Mila join us on her first birthday in February, it's been really fantastic to watch and see the positive impact. Amy, I don't know if you want to comment at all about it?
Yeah, I was thinking about it today. I, I feel like she's definitely, in just in the month that she's been certified, helped me connect with students, because, and a lot of, a lot of times, it's shocking to hear that the school counselor's not the coolest person in the building, and they don't always want to come down and see us. But she, I just feel like it's kind of, kids are so more willing to come in. It's gotten to the point that like, every period, she is booked. You know, our secretary will pop in, like, "Is Mila available, 5B? So-and-so wants to come down." And they just come down, and just take a few minutes to hang out with her, or they ask me if we can go for a walk, or we do. She joins almost all of our counseling groups, and, and like, it was really sweet, just that stuck in my head. We had a little girl who didn't want to sit ever with the group in counseling. She always wanted to sit in the back. And as long as she had Mila sit next to her this past week, she was part of the counseling group and, and willing to participate. So, it's amazing to me to see the impact. Unfortunately, you know, I've had some kids upset and crying, and she kind of puts her head on their lap, and they kind of pat her head, and it's just been, it's really been heartwarming for me. I love it. I love having her with me, and I'm really enjoying building new connections with students who I perhaps haven't known that well. So, and Josh and Mike love her, right?
Guilty.
Yes.
Yeah, we do, we do. Like I said, Amy started working on me before Mila was born, that this was going to happen. And really, it comes from student voice. We actually had students that would talk about, "Hey, when I was in an elementary school, we had therapy dogs. Can we have them at Cockins Road?" With the pep rally, as we mentioned, and the different pieces that we've talked about, we really see the student voice, and with that comes the pride, the ownership, and that shared responsibility. Yeah, it's fun to bring a dog to the Board of Education presentation, but there really is such a genuine impact on the students and the staff. And we, we talk to our groups, we talk to our clubs. Student Council has really, really become even more part of the day-to-day, along with our other student-focused groups. And they're where we go for information and to know what to do. So it's, it's been a pleasure, as Mike said. We've had a lot of fun this year. And with that, and with the environment, and making sure that that is set, we see our kids really thrive to that other part of that academic learning. So thank you. Any questions? We're happy to, to answer anything at all.
Josh, I just wanted to say, and Mike, I heard that the rock-paper-scissors was unbelievable. I had one very happy kid at the end of the day, from the orange team, and another on the yellow team, who was not as happy. But overall, a great time. So, thank you.
Yeah, I lost at 7:36. First one of the day. Go on.
I also just want to recognize Amy. Amy's also on our trauma and grief team for the district, and unfortunately, this year, we kind of pulled together our trauma team way too often, but Amy's up in the first defense across the district, and so her impact has felt beyond Cockins Road and throughout our building. So thank you for that. And thank you, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us at Cockins Road, and we appreciated the treats and, and interacting with your staff.
It's no boiler, but, you know, hopefully the dog is okay. Thank you very much. She saw me take the treat out of my hand, so I...
Thank you. We appreciate you all. Next, we'll have approval of the minutes. That will be Jeff and Sarah, all in favor? And that motion carries? Oh, and there's one abstention. Thank you so much from Renee. Thank you. Next, we have our Board of Education reports, and we will hear from Sarah Palusio, from the, our Legislative Co-Chair at Monroe County.
Thank you, Robyn. I do have quite a few things I wanted to share with the board tonight. Just from a legislative and advocacy standpoint, we've been very busy over the last few weeks, as usual. Last Monday, Emily and Robyn and I traveled to Albany to represent Pittsburgh with MCSBA. There were 20 members from the association who joined our superintendents, Mike included, in Albany, to meet with several of our state officials. We arranged meetings with legislator committee chairs, whose work impacts the school districts directly, as well as NICE Ed and Governor Hochul's education team. Our primary focus was budget and foundation aid. We all seemed to be on the same page. As far as that goes, it's just a matter of, as we talk about all the time, how the pie is cut. And for those of us around the table, of course, we're always looking to do what's best for our students, and give them all the financial support that they need to thrive. So we'll continue to advocate on their behalf. A full summary of the trip is posted on the MCSBA website, and we'll also share out at our next committee meeting in April. And then as of today, we've now seen the one-house budget proposals from both the Senate and the Assembly. I shared a summary with everyone earlier today from NISBA. Just wanted to highlight the fact that almost all of our legislative priorities for this year were a part of both proposals, which indicates that our legislators are listening, and that our efforts are worthwhile. So thank you to everyone for, for doing what we have this year. Also wanted to share that, in my role as Legislative Liaison with MCSBA, I had the pleasure of attending the RCSD Legislative Breakfast earlier this month. Very uplifting and inspiring event overall, with great attendance. At our table, we had a discussion about transportation needs, which we heard a lot from Mike tonight. In, in RCSD, a different need that they have there, but it was really powerful to hear the impact that it has on families in Rochester. I really appreciate hearing from a student about her personal experience there. Fortunately, no great solution, as we know, at the moment, but certainly an area to keep looking at and hopefully improve over time. I think I've mentioned this before, but at our April Legislative Committee meeting, we will have our Regents there to present. They're going to be talking to us about science of reading and financial literacy. Emily and I are reps on the Legislative Committee, but if anyone else is interested in attending that meeting specifically, I'd love to know. I'm trying to just get a pulse on who might be interested, and then I can kind of, Kim, great, thank you. And if anyone else, Robyn. I'm trying to work on that, just gauging interest right now, and see if we can hopefully open that up to all of our membership. So, thank you. I'll make a note of that. And then lastly, I'd like to just put in a plug for our next two committee meetings with MCSBA. Topics are geared directly toward board meetings. Two great professional development opportunities for all of us. So both in-person and Zoom options available, and I'm really hoping to see everyone there.
Thank you so much, Sarah. We appreciate your service here and at MCSBA. Thank you so much. Next, we will have a, a meeting report from Renee, and who will talk about community engagement.
Good evening, everybody. This will be fairly quick. So throughout the year, as you all know, but just to give everybody else a heads-up, we sit down together as a group, and we come up with a list of different activities that are going on within the community. So over the next couple of weeks, there's just a few things to mention. This Friday, we have got the middle school unified basketball game at Cockins Road Middle School that starts at 6:00 PM, so hope to see many of you guys there. We're very excited and looking forward to it. Those of you who have never been, it really is a great opportunity to see all of our kids working together and helping out in this basketball game. I've done it in my own school district. It's just, it's a great time, so I really hope to see as many of us there as possible. Additionally, added on to that, this weekend happens to be Mendon High School's musical. That's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. This Sunday, many of us, I know, have been invited to a fundraiser, the Taste of Pittsburgh fundraiser, which is for our community at large. It's 6:30 to 8:30 at Nazareth University. If you are attending, out of curiosity, I, yep, okay, great. We'll have a report back on that as well at our next meeting. And then, last but not least, next weekend is Sutherland High School's musical. And again, the same dates, it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So hopefully, we'll see you guys there as well. Do you have any questions? All right.
Thank you so much, Renee. Next, we will hear from our, Mr. Vespe, financial report.
Yes, for your consideration, tonight is the bus purchase proposition that we spoke of earlier. So that's $2.2 million worth of purchases, no impact on taxes, because we're going to use money out of the capital reserve for buses to offset that purchase.
Thank you. So we would like to hear a motion for the capital reserve bus purchase proposition. That will be Kim and Renee, all in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay, next is the instructional technology reserve for the one-to-one program. And typically, we layer this into one resolution, but there's two decisions. One is to spend half a million dollars out of the current reserve to offset expenses in the general fund budget for the one-to-one devices. The second one, as I previously explained, is to create a new technology, a new capital reserve for instructional technology over a 10-year period, not to exceed $15 million.
Okay, so let's hear a motion for the one-on-one capital reserve. Sarah and Renee, thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. And the next proposition would be for the new capital program. Maybe I hear a motion on that. That would be Emily and Renee again. Thank you. All in favor? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. And next, we will hear bid award.
The next is the bid award for the Cooperative Magazine Bid, but that's part of the consent agenda, so we're all set. We'll wait and, and pause until then. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to go back to the dates to remember, because we want to, we have a visit coming up, March 21, the Board Visit Tour at the Transportation. And it's a building tour, so who can be available for that? That's okay, that's okay. Thank you. And of course, we look forward to schools being closed for spring break, as I know our kiddos do. And from, from there, we have another board visit coming up at Mendon Center Elementary after that spring break. And looking ahead, who would possibly attend that? Thank you so much. And our next regularly scheduled meeting would be April 16. Thank you. Next, we'll hear from our Mr. Clark, Human Resources Report.
Thank you very much. For your consideration, we have the professional staff report. We have three school-related professional appointments, one administrator resignation, one school-related professional resignation, and one supervisory and technical resignation.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to accept the professional staff report? Jeff and Kim, all in favor? The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, for your consideration, is the support staff report. We have one clerical resignation, one transportation resignation for retirement, three custodial appointments, one custodial resignation, one food service appointment, and two food service terminations.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the support staff report? Sarah and Emily, thank you. All in favor? That motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And finally, first reading for tenure is under discussion.
Thank you. We review those, that in our board packets. Thank you. I look forward to the day. Next, we'll have special education report, Ms. Woods.
Good evening. The Committee on Special Education recommendations are on the consent agenda.
Thank you. And now our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Robyn. There is not a need for an executive session this evening. For your consideration, is the approval of the 24-25 district calendar.
Yes. May I have a motion to approve the 24-25 calendars? This is the second reading. Renee and Kim, all in favor? That motion carries. Thank you.
Just a couple of quick thank-yous. One to the, our foundation for the donation of $2,000 to our Student Opportunity Fund. Just to give you a sense, our foundation has agreed to giving $2,000 in the fall Just to give you a sense, our foundation has agreed to giving $2,000 in the fall, and then $2,000 for the second semester, and that $4,000 is gone as soon as we actually approve, approve the funds. So it's just eye-opening how many students that we have in our district that are in need, and how important it is to continue the fundraising for our students that have going through everything from their parents with job loss, to moving, to homeless, to tragedies, to you name it. And just a special thank you to Shana for overseeing that area too, and all of our buildings who contribute to our Student Opportunity Fund in one way, shape, or form. But we're doing our best to provide students with as much as we possibly can to help them be and feel successful. Today, we had a meeting with the town and the village, and one of the topics that we discussed was the eclipse. From that meeting, we will continue conversations internally to see what we explicitly want to do for that day. Initially, we said we were probably going to just shut down the facilities and just allow people to do what they want to do. But we talked more about the concentration of traffic. We talked about the concentration of people at the canal. And so we started to brainstorm some ideas where we may want to look at doing something on both sides of our district to spread the viewing area out across the town and village. So certainly more to come with regards to that. We did remove the policy manual audit from the agenda today. Thank you for those that brought a few things to my attention. So the policy manual, per best practice, should be up for 24 hours before our viewing. And as our board members diligently did their viewing, that we recognized some lengths were leading to different directions and a couple were broken. So that's a part we have to own from an instructional technology world of transferring all of those policies to a viewing area for everyone to see accurately. So that will be on next time and will be accurate. And then we will ask the board to vote on approval for the policy manual audit at our next board meeting. Wanted to reiterate a couple of things Mike talked about during his presentation. And it's such an interesting and hard thing to talk about. He mentioned the word structural deficit in the future. We just have to think about what's happened over the last few years. We've received several million, three, let's just say $3 million in federal funds. Those all went away. And so anything that we use those $3 million for, we had to decide if we're going to keep them or put them away, or are we going to put them in this new budget? In addition, we've talked about the world quite a bit, right? We've talked about inflation, the cost of energy, the cost of insurance, the cost of inflation, the tax cap, and the lack of funding that we're getting from the state as of now. And so we are looking, we started this process this year with about a $600, $600,000 deficit. Our district planning team consists of basically every unit stakeholder in the district, along with community members and PTSA. And we've worked together and we've created several lists of where possibly that money can come from, as far away from kids as possible, to close the gap. So you'll see a balanced budget, obviously, when it's presented to you, and I feel it will be done in a way where students aren't feeling it, which is a really good thing. The following year, so next year at this time, we'll be looking at a several-million-dollar deficit if nothing changes, which is a little bit scary. Which brings me to the whole concept of advocacy. This year, we were poised to work with stakeholder groups to start advocating for more state funding for this year. And then after my second trip to Albany, it became evident in talking to some legislators that oftentimes, the squeaky wheel is not the one that gets it at the end. It's the actual district or group that strategically can position themselves to advocate at a certain time. So a lot of our advocacy has been around more funding for the county. And our advocacy, starting in the fall, I would say next year, needs to be more specific from a community perspective around why Pittsburgh needs more funding. Mike was very diplomatic in when he shared that the governor's giving us an additional $1,000 this year in foundation aid. But in totality, I believe when we run the numbers accurately, we are losing money when we look at the total aid package from the governor. And specifically, the governor has earmarked $1.5 million for our district for a program that we do not have. But she's including that $1.5 million as part of our total budget. So I would just caution the board, if you see things coming out in the paper that says Pittsburgh is getting a 3.5% increase, we are not. We are getting a negative .0-something percent decrease. So our attention needs to shift, I think, from a Board of Education, superintendent, central office team, school district, parent, PTSA, full-on advocacy starting in the fall next year for significant funding for Pittsburgh schools. And I think that that will, yes, that will conclude my report. I'm sorry to end on a negative, but I think it'll be positive. I have faith.
I think so too. If we all work together. And I will tell you then, that when I was a part of the team that went to Senator Kruger's office, I did ask, and I asked in several different ways the same question. Why do we report that number if we can't benefit from it? Why is it even earmarked? I mean, it seems futile. So I guess I ended negative.
Well, when I asked the question, many don't even know that it is reported. It's amazing how little some, many people understand, how little people understand about district budgets, the foundation formula. So when we do these trips, a big part of it is educating the senators and assembly members.
Thank you. So next, we have a motion for the consent agenda. That's Sarah and Kim. Thank you so much. All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. Then the motion carries. Thank you so much. So is there any old business? Okay, hearing none. New business? I was, I was, we were so happy to be over at Hawkins Road for the building visit, and we got the opportunity to talk to John Beal, who wrote Midnight at Midday. And so I just wanted to also say that that play is coming up, just to, we already had it featured in February, but because the eclipse is coming and it's, the subject matter is the eclipse, we're going to bring it again, and that will be on April 6th and 7th at Hawkins Road Middle School. And we're so excited to be a part of that. Thank you. Is there any other new business? Okay. Next, we will have public comment. And we will first hear from Meredith Graham.
Thank you for taking my comment. Meredith Graham on North Hill Gate. So the Pittsburgh Central School District Instructional Challenge Program serves gifted students who are very grateful for that challenge. Years ago, Pittsburgh had more staff available, and therefore, more students were able to be served, as well as more rigor for those students. I'm hoping to convince you to hire two more instructional challenge teachers, so that there will be one dedicated staff member at each of the elementary schools and one at each of the middle schools. I'd just like to give you some quotes. I know Nina was here a month ago and talked about instructional challenge and why it's important. So here's the first quote. This is from Bonnie McGood, who has a parent of a sixth grader in instructional challenge and double-accelerated math. "My daughter has been in instructional challenge reading since second grade. Through these experiences in both MCE and now CRMS, she has been exposed to exciting and thought-provoking books and projects that would not have been possible in the regular classroom. I am so thankful to Mrs. Stewart and Mrs. Byland for advancing her love of books and language. She is also in double-accelerated math. It has been a wonderful experience for her, allowing her to reach her potential. We are lucky to have these teachers who allow our gifted students to get the support that they need. I hope that the school district will continue to provide these opportunities, expanding the number of teachers, so that all students who need their services receive them." Then I have a quote from Ying Lu, who is also a parent of a child in instructional challenge. "The instructional challenge program gives my kid great opportunities to challenge themselves. A big shout-out to Mrs. Stewart, who sees my kid's potential and helps them thrive." And then I have another quote from a parent of a student, Michelle. "My student enjoyed Mrs. Stewart's math enrichment when he was in the third and fourth grade. I wish there was something similar in fifth grade." And then I have a quote from an actual student in fifth grade, Edwin, from Mendon Center. "My regular class reading materials are too easy, and I am getting bored. Mrs. Stewart's class is just right for me." And then I have a quote from my own kiddo, who's in fifth grade at Mendon Center. "Mrs. Stewart is great because she adds a fun challenge into the lives of kids. I wouldn't like school if IC went away. There was a time when I was not in IC, and it was always boring and made the school day feel longer, because we learned the same thing over and over again. What I like best about IC is the fun projects that are both challenging and heart-filled." And to sum up, I just wanted to say that students who are gifted need challenges that are provided by a teacher who has been trained how to work with this particular population. Enabling gifted students to reach their full potential is essential, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Meredith. There were a few other public comments submitted, and I don't know if the citizens are in the building, but, so I will call your name, and if you are here, please come forward. The first name I'll call is Victoria Raphael. Ying Lu. Angie Myers. And Julie Batofsky. So thank you very much for your comments, and each board member did receive those comments. Next, we will have a motion for adjournment. That would be Sarah and Kim. Thank you very much. All in favor? That motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.